Please stand for the right.
The flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Spark. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To favor. Motion carries. Then we have the... So we now have the consent agenda. We have closed session notes, review prior to the motion. Closed session notes, we can hand these out to you guys. We'll need to get them back and try to review them. And then we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So with the consent agenda, we have the board minutes, the closed session minutes, and the paper and the papers and check register. Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There's some here. All right, highlights. Moving on to district highlights. Mr. Melander will be highlighting for Eagle Lake Elementary.
If there's a tech problem, you can blame one of the chairs. I'll let you decide. Right now, it's this one. Well, hey, good evening, Dr. Suits members of the board. I really appreciate the opportunity to highlight Eagle Lake and celebrate the wonderful things going on over there. I know I'm just really proud of our staff and our students, incredible work that they do daily. And so one of the things I'm going to be highlighting tonight and talking about is something that we call our word collectors, and it's a new initiative that we have started. Where word collectors came from, just a quick background of the journey that got us to this idea of being word collectors, is during one of our early two-hour late start PD sessions, we did some M-step analysis as a staff, and we did some digging into those areas that while there were more positive areas that were strengths, we did find a few targeted weaknesses that we wanted to focus on, and one of those was vocabulary. And so what we did then is went back and met with our school improvement team and a separate vocabulary team to say, what can we do within that area to make sure that we are targeting, to make it go from a weakness to a strength? So we said we wanted to create some excitement around vocabulary. We knew that we had to create something that kids got excited about to buy into. And so then, in our next late start, we went back and said, we are going to create something with vocabulary as a school-wide initiative, and what can we do for that? And so we collaborated into different teams, and we went through, what are the important pieces of vocabulary? What are we looking at here, more so than just saying words? And so we talked about ready-to-roll ideas, things that we could do immediately coming back from winter break, because this was our December meeting, and then also some put-a-pen-in ideas, that we said, these are great thoughts, but we need a little more time to develop. So with that said, we came up with the idea of word collectors. And the purpose for the word collection journey really comes back to these five pillars of literacy. And so we know to create strong readers through the science of reading, it takes all five of these components, from phonemic awareness to phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And we are grateful that our primary does such a great job in really honing in on those early skills with phonics, phonemic awareness, and phonics, that allows us at Eagle Lake to really start focusing on those fluency and vocabulary pieces. And so that's where we know through, in Scarborough's rope, its reading comprehension is developed through word recognition and language comprehension. So we really wanted to create a language-rich environment that has students invested and excited about acquiring words and improving their own vocabulary. So what we did initially is, I visited each classroom. I read the book called The Word Collector by Peter Reynolds. And in the book, it's a story about a young man named Jerome, who he creates a collection of words himself. And so one of the things that he collects, is he says, is the more words he knew, the more clearly he could share with the world what he was thinking, dreaming, and feeling. So this became the purpose behind what we were doing, is we wanted to empower our students to have that ability to be able to share more clearly what they're thinking, dreaming, and feeling. And obviously, then it very much impacts their ability to become fluent and skilled readers, fluent and skilled writers, to be able to use those pieces. So what does word collection look like? What is it? Our plan of action was to create two words of the week school-wide. Those two words, one of them is an academic word. For example, we've had the word fraction. We've had the word numerator, and those are all words chosen by our staff and our vocabulary committee, to be very intentional about words that we know that students will be exposed to through the curriculum, may see it on M-step, that we want them to have more exposure to. And the one that I get really excited about is what we call our wondrous word of the week. And this is a word that is chosen by our students. It is a student choice word. The class, it leads into the student-led announcements, where our students get to choose that word that they want to add to the word collection for Eagle Lake as a goal, and they get to then lead the school all week through announcements of breaking down that word, sharing what that word means, and all those. And they have some awesome Eddies here tonight who are going to model that for us in just a second. That was me prepping you so you can build up to it. So they're going to model for us here just a little bit what that looks like. And then, those words then go into our word collection jars, which look like this. We have all these giant poster-sized wondrous word collection jars all throughout very high-flight areas in the school, and those areas would be by all three of our bathrooms, because we know that those are places that students will go to frequently, and want them to continually be reminded of these words. And I mentioned earlier how we put a pin in a few ideas. One of the things we'll eventually do is add some activities by those word collection jars, so you know, like charades. Can you guess that word? Some of those activities that while teachers are waiting to go to the bathroom with their students, they can be reviewing these words continually. A few other things is continuing the excitement with activities with those selected words, and then doing a deeper dive in the classroom. So the real highlight of tonight is to model, as you can see here, these are some students who did the announcements, but I'm going to invite our two of our Eddies up to model what the announcements would look like.
Our board meeting vocabulary word of the day is excellence. The definition of excellence is equality of being outstanding or extremely good. The example sentence for the word excellence is any signature excellence that every student will do.
Now we will play a game. I will give you an example of our vocabulary word. If it's the correct meaning of the word, give a thumbs up. If it's not, give a thumbs down. A student who studies hard for all of their tests.
So this is interactive.
Thumbs up. An athlete who gives up easily and does not practice their skills. Thumbs down. A person who consistently works hard at their job. Thumbs up.
And so what they just led you through is each one of those pieces, on Monday, we give the academic words, Tuesday with the definition. Tuesday, another student gets to share it in the sentence. And then on Wednesday, we introduce that wondrous, that student choice word, they use it in a sentence, and then Friday, they play the not example, example game. And so then, you know, that's all to create excitement, right, school-wide, with the announcements, with the collection jars, but then, of course, there's some even better work going on in the classrooms, where they do a deeper dive into those words. Again, our fantastic committee has created daily review slides for all the words, where they provide those definitions, pictures of the words, getting into even more in-depth with the word, with synonyms, antonyms, looking at, you know, and I won't be involved in the degree, but more detailed of those words, and thanks for you. I think that was somebody telling me I needed to hurry up to it. And then, you know, in addition, the kids are also creating their own, what we call it, their frair word model journals, where they're going through and recording the words of the week themselves. They're writing those definitions, the sentences, all of those, using them in their own writing, looking for them in the books that they're reading. And I think my favorite part is, you know, sometimes things don't always stay up. We had a few occasions where the word collection jars fell down. You have kids coming up saying, where's the word collection jar? When are we going to get it back up? And that's really what we're trying to create, is just that excitement and love of words, so that way it can transfer into their love of reading and being able to be skilled readers and the incredible students they are. So that is it.
Now moving on to items of business. We have to select somebody for our district for NASB Board. Did you guys all get a chance to review that? So we have one, we're required to vote for one seat of the Region Six. I'd like to recommend that we, does anybody have a recommendation?
I would like to recommend Tiana Harrison. I've met her a few times, or a couple of different things, and she's been very knowledgeable and...
Anybody else have any comments or thoughts on that? Okay. Well, I think I'm just fine with doing that, so would everybody support that? Would you do a roll? We'll call a vote tonight. So in order to vote for Tiana Harris, Nick?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Okay, moving on to personnel. Who do we have first? Ms. Jordan, if you have any word.
Thank you. Good evening. I have the pleasure of recommending the hiring of Ms. Jennifer Tabor for our position of elementary music teacher. Jennifer has a Michigan certification in K-12 music education. She received her Bachelor of Arts in Music Education from DePaul University. She's also currently working on her Master of Educational Leadership degree, and she most recently graduated from the leadership program through Golden Sacks 10KSB. She might fail to say what those stand for, but 10KSB. She also has created a music school locally here that is developed for after-school music education opportunities, and she has three daughters. Two of them will be going off to college in the fall, and she also has a fourth grader. When she does have free time, she enjoys gardening and home renovations.
Evening. Then we'll vote for both of you to say aye. And now, Mr. Ford.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Middle School would like to highly recommend Mrs. Elizabeth Colvin for our sixth grade position, specifically English and Social Studies. I'd say we'd like to welcome her, but she spent a lot of time at our middle school in recent years, and many of you are aware of the time she spent in other buildings in recent years taking on long-term substitute roles. She always does an outstanding job. Liz holds a Bachelor's in Elementary Education from St. Michael's College and a certification in Elementary Education in Michigan. Her family, or she has her husband here, Ryan, and Hendrick, her ninth-grade son, and a couple of adult Eddies out there doing the world right now, Mia and Andrew. So there are Eddies through and through. What I've learned about Liz in my time with her recently is just the passion that she has to get back into the classroom full-time. She just brings great energy every day and works great with kids. So it's our recommendation to hire at everyone's school.
Can I have a motion to hire Jennifer Tabor and Liz Colvin as recommended? All right, any questions or discussion on that?
I just want to say it was two great Eddies here, because the other day at the primary, when we had, I love to read, come and when you put that many K-1 kiddos into a gym, it's a little crazy, and right away, Jennifer Tabor got up and said, okay, let's sing a song, and all of the kids knew the words and all sang it together. And then with Liz, I mean, she's just been in some of our schools for so many years, and it's great to have her now officially in the classroom every day. So two great new Eddies.
Excellent. Well, all in favor of hiring these two? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Welcome to Edgburn. Would you like to make any comments or anything?
Here?
You don't have to.
You don't have to. You're welcome.
I want you to always say here, or go over there.
You can say right there.
All right, you can use this area.
Yeah, I've had a great time teaching all the kids. Administration's been amazing, and teachers have been still very well.
Welcome to school. We're excited to have you. Liz?
Oh, this is not my first rodeo, and so just happy to be in a full-time role, and I feel like we've been Eddies forever, so it's exciting. So thanks for having me.
We're very excited to have both. Thanks for coming aboard. All right, now to school of choice. We have to, our district's required to opt-in or out of school of choice annually. I believe it's the best interest of the district for our students to continue school of choice. Can I have a motion for this, please? Spark. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries. Let's see, then we have to do a minimum wage adjustment. So the Senate approved changes the minimum wage requirement. The district adjusted the following substitute rates. I think you guys have that here. Do I have a motion to change the wage to meet the standard for the law?
I was just going to say, and really, we have no one who's currently on this wage, because a lot of our sons are previous employees who get to come back at the wage that they left. So this is just to comply with the law. We don't have anyone actually at this level, just for your information. Support, I'm Asher Simpson, supporting.
I agree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.
I can take the next one too, to explain if you want.
Yeah, if you'd like to have a great...
So the relinquishment of the Title III Part VIII immigrant funds. This was a different situation than where we were last year. I know last year, we came and relinquished our funds, and we said at that point that we wanted to create a plan that we would use the funds, because we didn't think it was right to give any money back that we could use for kids. So we were able to do that with Section 41, and we submitted a plan, and it was approved. However, for the Title III Part VIII immigrant fund, we were under $10,000, and we were at a couple hundred dollars, you had to be a part of a consortium to accept the funds. And Mrs. McGuire tried really hard to get a consortium to take us, and we could not get a response from anybody in our area, I think with the couple hundred dollars that we had, on the amount of work that goes into it. So unfortunately, we are forced to relinquish the funds, because we cannot accept them unless we were a member of a consortium. So that is why we're here, asking for board approval to relinquish a couple hundred dollars.
Any questions on that?
It's a couple hundred dollars total.
Yes. Yes, the Section 41 that we were able to create a plan for, that was a little over, I believe, $4,000, so we were able to keep that. But this was, I believe, about $238, and we couldn't, you had to be a part of a consortium, and we couldn't find one here close enough to us to accept.
So our motion to reject the Title III Part VIII?
So?
Spark. All right, we have to do a roll on this one. Chelsea? Kevin?
Yes.
Natalie? Myself, yes. Nick?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, moving on to the superintendent's board.
Okay, well, I'm excited to start my report with breaking news that we just won a game, our basketball mystery game, which ended double overtime. So sorry to check my phone, but I was waiting to get a report on that. So we can start with that. Actually, lots of good news. Our support staff member from January, with how our board meetings felt, we're going back to January for this one. And this is again, this is support staff member of the month that we do in collaboration with Culvers of Michigan Waca Granger in Elkheart. And so we were excited to be able to acknowledge Mr. Brandt over at the primary, who if you are ever in the building, he is just, you know, as much of a celebrity there as Mrs. Spalding is. And he goes above and beyond what a custo, I mean, all of our custodians do, but he's working with kids on all sorts of different social skills. He takes them under his wing. He just is a true part of the whole primary community. And so some of his nominators said that he is a wonderful custodian who works hard to keep our building ship shape, but his most important job is, of course, bringing a smile to student faces. No matter what kind of day they're having, Mr. Brandt is always there with a funny joke or a way to make them smile. He goes above and beyond what his job description is. He does great at his job, but also works so well with all the students. He has a positive impact on the students he is around. He embodies the heart of our school community, serving as our dedicated custodian, a steadfast mentor, an enthusiastic cheerleader, and a true friend to us all. Beyond maintaining the cleanliness and safety of our building, he takes time to notice when students need a little extra support, offering a kind word, encouragement, a listening ear, or a positive incentive for them. So we were really excited to be able to acknowledge him over at the primary. And we'll have, next month, we'll have our next support staff member. Then, just two quick updates too. There were some questions about where we were at with snow days that I've had from parents. I've responded to most. I still have a couple to get to, but we have gone through our six forgiven days and two additional. But the state of Michigan allows you to apply for a waiver for up to three additional days, and that's what we will be doing. I don't foresee an issue with us getting that approved, because unlike a lot of schools, we don't use any of our professional development time as student instruction time. So we already provide more instruction to our students than a number of other districts do, and we also have the bond work that's going to be starting. So we really have to be out of our buildings on that last day, especially out of Eagle Lake, to get everything moved and ready for all of the great renovations we're going to have this summer, thanks to the community. So at this point, we are good. I don't foresee any issue. We'll need to be going longer. There's also been some questions, just so that you are aware of a board, on why we don't use e-learning, which makes sense, because a lot of Indiana schools, you'll see on the news, use e-learning. In Michigan, you have to have board approval for up to 15 days of e-learning, so it's not something you can just do. And as part of that, you have to ensure that every student not only has a device, but has access to reliable internet at home, and can be provided with any accommodations they might have if they have a 504 IEP. So to do all of that is a lot on a snow day, to make sure that everyone would have that internet access. So we haven't gone that route, and we also haven't needed to. So at this point, we're still good this year, pending, you know, hopefully this nice 50-degree weather sticks around and we're all set. With the bond, just a quick update. We are doing a traffic study this week, which is looking to see what is going to provide the information to MDOT on where we can have access for doing that new pick-up-and-drop-off loop for the intermediate and primary, so that will be going on all week. And then we had our pre-bid meeting out of Eagle Lake last week on Monday, was well-attended. Bidding will be next week for that. And then next week, we will also have our pre-bid meeting for the primary and intermediate, and then that will go to bid after that. So lots of exciting things going on, and really excited about that basketball win, so wish some luck on Wednesday.
That's right. Thank you, Courtney. Anybody have any questions, buddy? Next, we'll move on to the comments from the audience. Do we have any audio, audience members that would like to speak? I think that you know the drill pretty well. Three minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Lynn Shonston. You have my address on file. There's something that I like to talk about, is this one day a month of your late start. My, I have two granddaughters. One's in ninth grade, one's in 10th grade. My grandson is a senior this year. He goes to Career Center, so he doesn't really, that doesn't affect him. But my two granddaughters do not like the late start at all. They want to get to school. That's number one. Number two, they were happy when the computer system was down, because all three of my grandkids were tickled to death that they could use pencil and paper. You guys need to seriously think about that, about getting them off of some of these computers sometimes during the, you know, some of their class time, and get them to pencil and paper, because they were so excited. I mean, they, I mean, the girls, they were just excited. And they went, and guess what? We got to use paper and pencil today. And when you have a ninth and a 10th grader that's ecstatic about that, and then you have a 12th grader, he was ecstatic too. He said, Nettie, you can't believe it, we got to use paper and pencil today. I guess that happened for a couple days. So you guys might want to think about getting them away from these computers for a while, because you know, when they go home, not only are they probably on their computers, they're on their phone. They're getting all of this time when they really need to have time with their family. So I just wanted to make that aware, you guys. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
My name is Sean Jesse. I am here on behalf of the EEA. I have been in leadership for the EEA for the last 10 years, as either Vice President or President, and we have found over the years that we do a decent job of expressing our concerns to our principals and to our superintendent, but we don't do a great job of talking to the board. So, and in hopes that we can kind of be a little bit more transparent, and also, we just don't break to each other all the time, and we got to actually try to make changes. And frankly, we kind of also believe that you don't know what you don't know. So our intention is, from now on, at every board meeting, to try to express any concerns we have, make any suggestions, try to be helpful. That's our goal. And though, obviously, there's always lots of things to work on, we're not going to inundate you. We're only going to do a couple, okay? So the first thing was kind of just a little bit of a disappointment. We negotiated to have our merit pay split up between all teachers, and for those dollars, we would have the option to put them into our HSA. That unfortunately, kind of just, it got forgotten this year. And though we understand that happens, there is a lot of concern with teachers, because we could have put $300 into our HSA, and instead, we were only given $200, because $100 gets paid to taxes. Our HSA gets its tax exempt. So that's something that is, it's still nice to get the $200. We're never going to complain about that, but it would have been nice to be able to put those dollars into our HSA. The second is a concern for us, and I think this is something that we very much support, that we want to have this moving forward. We just don't have great understanding of what to do yet. This is regards to Alastrian. As an entire district K-12, our teachers just aren't really sure exactly what we're supposed to do. We're not totally on the same page yet. And I know, in talks with Dr. Suits, and in talks with our administrators, we know this is a work in progress. We know we're getting there. It's not a complaint as to that. But there is a lot of misunderstanding, and this is something we meet as a board every once a, once a month. It's actually the same day you guys all meet. It's actually the same day you guys all meet. It's come up every single time, and today we talked about it for 35 minutes. So it's a major issue that we want to be on board with, that we want to be understanding with. And then finally, just a suggestion. These late starts are something that we did talk about, negotiated, and we value them very much. It is a time for us to work with our departments. It's a time for us to actually collaborate that we don't get normally. It's something that I think we've grown into. We've gotten better at them, but it's something we truly value. But we also understand that parents kind of struggle with the mornings. We find it's a morning taking care of children. We totally understand that. So we have a suggestion. We'd like to see, instead of doing Wednesday late starts, once a month, have a Friday afternoon, whether that's a half-day or just an early release. We feel like that time could be much, I don't say more beneficial, because I think it's the same two hours. But we would definitely utilize the time. We continue to be able to collaborate. But we also think that would be something that would be a little easier for our community members and our parents to try to take care of child's care. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Show them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. We urge her.